Good afternoon. Thank you for being here on this rainy afternoon. We have a proclamation. Whereas 2024 marks the 72nd anniversary of Administrative Professional Week, formerly known as National Secretaries Week, which was founded in 1952 to recognize the contributions of secretaries and other office support staff in business and government and to attract people to secretarial careers. And whereas administrative professionals, including secretaries, administrative assistants, office managers, and other administrative support staff, represent a significant segment of the workforce. And whereas administrative professionals are those who master technology, effectively utilize interpersonal and communication skills, manage projects, organize the office, and apply their creativity to solve problems. And whereas administrative professionals are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. And whereas by investing in training and development and being committed toward delegating responsibilities to utilize administrative employee skills and assets, companies and organizations ensure their administrative employees will have the best opportunity to excel in the 21st century and beyond. And whereas Administrative Professionals Week is sponsored by the International Association of Administrative Professionals and is celebrated worldwide, bringing together millions of people for various community events, educational seminars, and individual corporate activities. And whereas the city of San Marcos is extremely proud of our talented and highly skilled administrative professional staff and officially recognize and appreciate their hard work, support, and continued professional growth. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th of 2024 as National Administrative Professionals Week and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to recognize and honor the service, dedication, and professionalism of administrative professionals. And please accept my thank you to the folks who get it done.
Thank you very much. We all work very hard all year long to keep our offices moving slowly or swiftly, oh, sorry. And to kind of help our coworkers' lives be a little bit easier during the week. So we're grateful to accept the proclamation.
Let the photos begin. A proclamation. Dan will make sure we get all lined up before the actual photo happens. But thank you for lining up now. A proclamation. Whereas the week of April 21st through 27th of 2024 has been designated nationally as Volunteer Appreciation Week to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers who give their time and service in a testament of compassion and generosity. And whereas the San Marcos Police Department, through its Volunteers in Police Service program, benefits from over 50 active volunteers who seek to support the mission of the police department and demonstrate the core values of the city of San Marcos. And whereas in delivering positive customer experience and professionalism, through their volunteerism at the front counter, the volunteers in police service apply their skills and innovation through large-scale scanning efforts to digitize paper records and teamwork to organize and staff, oh, sorry, organize and staff community outreach events and internal ceremonies and recognitions. And whereas the volunteers in police service serve with integrity through their required Criminal Justice Information Services trainings, fingerprint registrations, and adherence to the department's confidentiality policies and practices. And whereas the good done by these engaged citizens translated to 4,151 volunteer hours in 2023, dramatically improving the level of services rendered by the San Marcos Police Department. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through 27th as National Volunteer Appreciation Week and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to recognize the positive impact of volunteerism and service in our community as we are better together. Thank you for what you're doing. I know that it is appreciated by the folks who are out of the department, but know that it's appreciated by all of us. Some people just don't know it yet. Thank you very much. We're honored to get this proclamation and we do our best to do anything we can to provide the ultimate service to our police department. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for what you do. All right, a proclamation. Whereas Earth Day is commemorated annually on April 22nd to demonstrate support for environmental protection, advance sustainability initiatives, and raise awareness about the challenges facing our planet. And whereas the theme for Earth Day 2024 is Planet vs. Plastics, highlighting the urgent need to address the global crisis caused, crisis caused by the production, proliferation, and pollution of plastics, the impact of which can be felt in every corner of the planet. And whereas plastics have become a pervasive and harmful presence in our ecosystems, endangering wildlife and humans alike, contaminating water sources, and contributing to the degradation of our natural resources. And whereas a global public health crisis has emerged due to plastics contaminating our water, air, land, and food, resulting in hormone disruptions, reproductive issues, and other health complications, which cost the United States an estimated $250 billion annually in healthcare costs. And whereas it is imperative that we take collective action to reduce plastic consumption, promote sustainable alternatives, and advocate for policies that mitigate the distribution of single-use plastics and plastic water. And whereas, mark your calendars for the 11th Annual Earth Day San Marcos Festival returning to Spring Lake on Saturday, April 20th of 2024. This free, community-wide, family-friendly event is your chance to celebrate our local natural resources and connect with nature. And whereas there will be a variety of hands-on educational activities for people of all ages, as well as live performances and demonstrations. You won't want to miss the chance to interact with eco-friendly exhibitors and vendors who will be showcasing an array of environmental and sustainability-related topics. So come join us at the headwaters of the San Marcos River and experience a day of fun, entertainment, and learning. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of April of 2024 as Earth Day and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to join in efforts to combat plastic pollution, promote environmental sustainability, and work towards a healthier, more resilient planet. Thank you all for what you're doing. There we go. Anyone want to say anything? Anything more about the event?
Well, Earth Day should be every day, but at the event this year, we are giving away free boat rides. So if anybody, a community member, has never been on a boat ride, this is your opportunity to get to experience the magic of Spring Lake and then learn about why San Marcos is so important. Glass-bottomed boats are free on Saturday.
Well, as Miranda said, every day should be Earth Day. And in San Marcos, we're committed to trying to create habitat for wildlife, as well as a more sustainable future for human beings. We are part of the ecosystem. So we do that through native plant restoration projects. And then we do have with us the HCP manager. So we are part of the Habitat Conservation Plan to protect our endangered species in our river.
Thank you very much. Let the photos begin. Proclamation. Whereas more than 63,989 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas in 2023, resulting in over 9,962 children in foster care in Texas and the death of 173 children in Texas in 2023. And whereas 286 children were confirmed victims of abuse in Hayes County in 2023. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. Through the perseverance of our many community organizations working daily to end child abuse, the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center continually served children throughout the pandemic. And whereas locally, representatives from Hayes County Child Protective Board, Hayes County District Attorney's Office, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, and Roxanne's House, Greater San Marcos Youth Council, Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, court-appointed special advocates, San Marcos, Buta, and Kyle Police Departments, Hayes County Sheriff's Office, and Krista Santa Rosa San Marcos have joined forces to provide preventive and supportive services to child victims and their families. And whereas, every child in San Marcos deserves to be safe, nurtured, and supported in caring relationships. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to work together to raise awareness and prevent child abuse in our community and beyond. Thank you all for what you do in this effort.
Thank you, Mayor. Belissa Rodriguez, I'm the CEO with the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, representing our child abuse program, Roxanne's House as well. I just want to say, just to reiterate what's in the proclamation, it really does take a community to support children. And city of San Marcos has been an integral part of that. So we appreciate the support from the city and the community. And I also just want to hand off to our partners here. I know we've got a couple of other organizations represented and we have another proclamation. So I'll reserve my comments for that part.
Hi, my name is Laura. I'm with Greater San Marcos Youth Council. I wanted to share a story that deeply resonates with the mission of our agency. A child recently arrived at our shelter. Each time she made a simple mistake, like spilling her milk, forgetting to brush her teeth, or coloring outside the lines, she would be in fear, asking if she was in trouble, if we were mad at her, or if we were going to hurt her. Her innocence shone through the shadows of abuse, highlights the urgent and continued need for us to raise awareness and prevent instances of abuse. Last year, GSMYC cared for 146 abused and neglected children, providing shelter in a safe and nurturing environment for periods ranging from 24 hours to 24 months, with 100% safety rating. But the work does not rest solely on one agency's shoulders. Today, GSMYC wants to thank the mayor and council members, as well as other agencies who bring awareness to child abuse. Please join us in wearing blue for the next two Fridays because every child matters and deserves to feel safe and loved. Let's work together to make this a reality. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Peña with CASA of Central Texas. It stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. So we are program trains community volunteers to advocate on behalf of the best interests for children that are removed in legal CPS cases. In fiscal year 2023, we were able to cover 81% of the children in Hayes County who were removed in CPS cases. Our goal is 100%, so we have more work to do. So spread the word. We have trainings going on all the time for volunteers. So thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Well, let the photos begin. Proclamation. Whereas 6.3 million Texans have experienced some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas two in five women and one in five men in Texas have been sexually assaulted in their lifetime, affecting all races, ages, genders, and economic situations. And whereas the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided direct services to 616 adult victims of sexual assault in Hayes and Caldwell Counties last year. And whereas San Marcos is intolerant of sexual violence in any form and recognizes that education and awareness may prevent sexual assault. And whereas efforts to reduce sexual assault can only be successful through citizen involvement and the safety of the citizens of the city of San Marcos depends upon our actions to end sexual assault. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month and do hereby call on residents in San Marcos to recognize the importance of awareness in order to reduce sexual assault. Thank you for what y'all do. I know that you're there when the need is there. And you're right, and I'm glad we do this, is we want the prevention.
Thank you so much again. Again, I just want to reiterate the support that it takes to work on these issues. And one of the things, I think, as an organization, HCWC, we've existed for over 45 years and so often were thought of as a shelter. And though that is a critical and important part of our mission, we often, sometimes forget that that sexual assault and child abuse are two very integral parts of the organization. Last year, we served over 2,000 individuals face-to-face with our services. A little under half were children across programs. So we have children who live in homes where there's abuse. They are witnessing domestic violence. There are children who are growing up with parents who've experienced sexual assault. They themselves have experienced abuse directly. Our Child Advocacy Center has served over 500 children this past year, just alone within our child abuse program. So important to understand that it takes a whole community to work on this issue. And I just want to invite folks to be part of two different efforts that we have going on. On April 29th, we will be hosting our third annual Putt Classic, which is a golf tournament in memory of fallen officer, San Marcos Police Officer, actually, Justin Putnam. His family raises funds for children's activities that benefits all across our programs. And then we have our annual auction, which is May 18th, at the Texas State LBJ Ballroom, we're back, where we raise the most that we possibly can to benefit all our services. So thank you again for all your support.
I already got my table. All right. A proclamation. Whereas the term victim describes a person who has been subjected to a crime, it also serves as a status that provides certain rights and protections under the law, including the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights. And whereas advocacy by and for victims of crime is itself a form of seeking justice, no less than justice sought in the courts to support victims of crime and honor their reality, allowing them autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit, ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas the question, "How would you help?", and the tagline, "Options, Services, and Hope for Crime Survivors", are included in the artwork for this year's theme. And whereas the 2024 theme asks all of us, friends, family members, neighbors, colleagues, community leaders, victim service providers, criminal justice practitioners, and health professionals, how we can help crime victims. Are you prepared, if someone confides in you, about a victimization? Is your organization victim-centered and trauma-informed? Are you familiar with the services available in your community? And whereas we ask you to join the National Office for Victims of Crime during National Crime Victims Rights Week of 2024 as we commit to creating safe environments for crime victims to share what happened to them. By doing so, we're able to offer support, options for life-saving services, and most importantly, hope. And whereas the San Marcos Police Department is determined to respond to crime and violence in its community by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future through the work of the Victims Services Unit. And whereas the San Marcos Police Department's Victims Services Unit is dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities while bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through 27th of 2024 as National Crime Victims Rights Week and do hereby call upon the citizens of San Marcos to echo the theme and purpose of the crime victims' rights to answer the question, "How would you help?", "Options, Services, and Hope for Crime Survivors", which emphasizes the goal to reaffirm this city's commitment to support the work of these victims' services advocates who are committed to improving our collective response to all victims of crime so they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you for what you do for our community. And now we'll take some photos. All right, a proclamation. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury, I'm sorry, injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And whereas it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic and safety rules. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in San Marcos and do hereby call upon all persons of the city of San Marcos to respectfully become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Thank you for what you do and for bringing this to us and promoting this awareness.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council members, for helping us educate the public to save lives, motorcyclist lives. It is super important. We had a fatality in Leander last night, a motorcyclist fatality, hit and run. And suspect was caught. But with that said, it was simply by not putting down a device. And he got scared and took off. So number one, super important, please pay attention and put down your devices, not just for motorcyclists, but motorists also. Also, following too closely behind a motorcyclist, we don't have a lot of stop time. So if you're far enough away and we happen to go down because we hit a pothole, you have time enough not to run over us. So I'm going to read another, we've got talking points here, sorry. Thank you. I'm going to read another, another super important point. Failure to yield the right of way while turning left. When turning left, always look further down the road as motorcyclists are smaller and look farther away. Over 30% of crashes occur this way. The reason, I didn't see him. We are super tiny, so far away, we are the size of a pen. Another one is, do not follow too closely, which I just mentioned. Allow motorcycles, motorcycles plenty of space for the rider to react to what might be happening ahead on the road. A motorcyclist's riding patterns are different from a car. We may need to swerve to miss debris on the road or to navigate around the potholes. or to navigate around the potholes. We need our whole lane to navigate to what might be on the road ahead of us. And number seven, super huge, again, turn your head to look for motorcycles in your blind spot. Now, I'm motorcycle safety and awareness. I'm human. I need to look because there is blind spots in my cars. I can't tell you how many times I've had a motorcyclist next to me and I myself almost didn't see him. So look, 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 please look. My name is Spitfire. I'm with Texas Council Clubs and Independent. I should have said that earlier. This is Castro with Lista Saints Motorcycle Club. He's a motorcycle ministry club. We are here to let you know our lives are important too, as well as y'all's. So please, thank you very much, Mayor, again, council members, for allowing us to be here and speak and help educate the public on how to show the road with motorcyclists. Thank y'all very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing y'all next year.